All right, so now being a bit after 5:45, I'll call the Monday, August 28th, meeting of the Plimpton Board of Selectmen to order. Wonderful to have a full house here tonight, see so many people, this is great, and for such a great opportunity to get together and celebrate. So, we would like to recognize some life-saving acknowledgements, and I'll turn things over to Public Safety. So, we've got Cheryl, Chief Davis, and Chief Hall.
We've got the whole gamut here. I'm just gonna give a very brief welcoming statement. We're here tonight to celebrate some really good teamwork and second chances. I would say that when it comes to public safety in Plimpton, you're not gonna find a town that works better between police and fire. We train together regularly. I've had the pleasure of instructing the police department in CPR for the last five or six years, and I'd say that I've never been in a group that takes it more serious than the Plimpton Police Department, and that training has truly paid off. Captain Scherstedt, I'm not gonna steal his thunder, he's gonna talk about the chain of survival and why things went as well as they did for us, but I can't emphasize enough, the teamwork between Regional Colony, getting the information to us immediately, starting life-saving pre-arrival instructions, the communication that they gave to us, the updates, the work that the Plimpton Police Department did to eventually turn it over to us, and eventually the care that was received at Beth Israel Hospital. And without further ado, I'll introduce Police Chief Hall, who's gonna give us the synopsis and present the police life-saving awards.
Thank you, Chief. Real quick, before I go into the synopsis of what happened to Reverberate, what Chief Davis said, I can't thank enough for the support that my officers get, Plimpton Fire gets, from the town and families. You know, we're a very tight-knit community here, and again, to reverberate what she had mentioned, you know, we are a very close team, and it gets me emotional seeing the upholding support that my officers have, the Fire Department has, Regional Colony, you know, here, they do a fantastic job for us, day in and day out, just somewhat the unsung heroes, they don't obviously get the recognition that they deserve. So to have everybody in the room to actually hear what took place, that my officers, you know, were able to be a part of something, a miracle, quite honestly, as well as the Fire Department and Regional Colony, means a lot, and allowing us to kind of do our presentation today, thank you very much for doing that. So what I will do is I will read the synopsis now, and then I'll have Lieutenant Hoffman hand out these awards. On Thursday, January 12, 2023, at approximately 11:34 hours, Sergeant John Simon, Officer Cam Broderick, and Officer Robert Orr were dispatched to 118 Mayflower Road for a report of cardiac arrest with CPR in progress. The officers arrived on scene within 52 seconds of being dispatched. As Officer Orr rushed inside the residence to assess the situation, Officer Broderick moved the automated external defibrillator, known as an AED, from the medical kit from the police cruiser. Upon entering the residence, the officers noticed an unconscious male lying on the floor and not breathing. Officer Broderick was not able to obtain a pulse of the male party. Officer Orr opened up the AED, began to place the defibrillator pads on the male. The AED then performed an automated check on the male party, and determined that a shock was needed to regain rhythm in the heart. The shock was then administered, followed by continued CPR. Officer Broderick then placed a bag valve mask on the male and began rescue breath as the male's son continued chest compressions. At this time, Sergeant Simon, the Plimpton Police Personnel, arrived on scene. Fire personnel then began to take over rescue weapons using automated CPR device called the Lucas Machine. A second shock from the AED was soon advised and administered, leading to a pulse located on the male and eventually began breathing again. All officers and fire personnel then assisted the male in getting prepared for transport back to Israel Baptist Hospital in Plymouth. As a result of a quick response, the teamwork and life-saving actions of the police officers and fire personnel involved, the life of the individual was able to be saved and make a full recovery. Officers, your actions in this incident reflect your continued dedication to this agency, the town it serves, and the people who live here. Please keep up the great work. Thank you. What I'd like to do now, real quick, and then we will turn this over to Captain Scherstedt, is I'm gonna have Lieutenant Hoffman present the life-saving awards to these fine officers.
First, the award goes to Sergeant John Simon.
Again, thank you very much, gentlemen. Great work. Now what I'd like to do is turn this over to Captain Scherstedt from the Fire Department, who has a presentation that he'd like to present to all of you.
Thank you, Chief. As a shift commander that was on duty that day, we're gifted with skills that help us perform these duties. Thankfully, we don't have to do it every day. It's a blessing that we can do what we have to do, when we're called upon to do it. If their response time, you said, was 52 seconds? Mine was 52 and a half. Because I recall pulling into the driveway and seeing Officer Broderick and Officer Orr flying right across, right in front of me with the defibrillator in hand, so I already knew that we were one step ahead of the game going into the house. We get up there, and the patient's son was performing CPR already for us. It's the first time in 25 years that I let a bystander continue doing CPR. He was doing an amazing job, and it allowed me to work with the police officers to do what we had to do. Nothing sure or perfect is the best way I can describe how this went. We had dispatches, it took a call, I listened to the call afterwards, and a nice and calm professional gave the instructions. We had a bystander doing CPR, and that's what leads us into what I wanted to share with you today, which is what's called the chain of survival. It's something that we often teach. Every CPR class that we do, every public safety announcement that we make that involves CPR is exactly a, it's called the chain of survival. The first link, if you haven't seen it, is calling 911. 911 then provides instructions to start CPR as fast as possible, and we apply an AED and use an AED. Then you have the response from the EMS personnel to provide the advanced care, medication, electricity, whatever it is that's needed for that particular patient. We transport them to the hospital, and then we leave them in the hands of the hospital, who thankfully, we have some of the best medical care on the South Shore. South Shore Hospital, in this case, BI in Plymouth. I wouldn't hesitate to bring my family to either one of these hospitals. The horror stories that you may hear, or the success stories such as this that you may hear, at the end of the day, these professionals are taking what we bring to them and doing the best that they can, and thankfully, in this situation, all of us, we work together. We're in a town that works so well together, and I remember pulling into the driveway and seeing Cam and Rob, and I was so thankful that they were, it could have been any two officers, but immediately I was relieved that I had two capable people that I was working with. And then coming right behind them were Fire Fighter Skorinka, Chief Davis, Fire Fighter Gomos, and all the other responders that came along with us. There was Joe Wright, another great paramedic, Gary Semero, Zach Rusini, and Kate Marshall. All professionals in this community, for a small community, were so lucky to have who we have in responding to make such a success of this situation. So again, I bring attention to this chain of survival, call 911, our rock dispatchers giving the pre-arrival instructions, staying calm, walking the family through what they were dealing with. They began CPR, who was in progress when we get up there. That's truly what saved a life. Early CPR is what allowed us to bring the tools that we bring to make this work. The use of the AED delivering the shocks, I think we delivered two shocks before the paramedics started their assessment and their work. And then our EMS professionals, some of the best that I've ever had the pleasure of working with in 25 years, and then our transport to the hospital, and in this case, thankfully, recovered. So congratulations to everybody involved. Thank you for everything that you guys did, and it's a pleasure to work side by side with you. At this time, I'd like to have Chief Davis present our crew with a citation for the uniforms.
And Fire Fighter Gomos, Steve Gomos.
And could I have Mike Mahoney come up to say a few words? We'd also like to give the same firefighter award. Our dispatchers, they dispatch both police and fire. They're an extension of us. We'd like to share the same opinion that we're doing for our members with your members.
As Captain Scherstedt stated, oftentimes, the dispatchers are sort of an unsung hero, but absolutely the first link to the chain of survival in this case. The bystanders have got to be the key to the survival. So, really, all I have to say is thank you to my crew and all of you. First off, I'll have Deputy Tucker receive on behalf of Samantha Gomos, who lives in Plymouth.
We'd like to thank the family for coming out here today to be with us. It's important to us to see that we have the support of the family, the residents of the town. We'd just like to thank everybody for coming together today and recognizing the fine work of the dispatchers, the firefighters, and the police officers that work so hard and sensitive. Thank you.
Well, I would just like to say, on behalf of the board, how much we appreciate your professionalism. We have a great team. We realize it, we appreciate the hard work you do. We are here to support you, and through the chief, you know, whatever we can do, both chiefs, we are here for you guys. So we appreciate everything you do for us and our residents, and we couldn't be prouder, honestly. It's, we feel like proud parents, so yeah, thank you everyone for all of your hard work.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your guys' weight! It's a proof in the pudding right here.
We didn't want to put you on the squad, but...
I do have fun myself.
Apparently.
We'd love a good picture, if you don't mind. Not interrupt their meeting anymore, but outside, outside? Would that be good?
He's only 32 years old.
34 last week. Give me two happy birthdays.
Well, thank you all for coming. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well done, Bree, thank you. All right, so on to not-so-fun business. We'll do the second item on our agenda, which is engine brakes awareness campaign. So this is, come to us numerous times from numerous areas of the town, that they're experiencing disruption and quality of life issues being impacted because of engine brakes. So while we can't do any legislative action to curtail the use, we are choosing to do an awareness campaign, and hopefully appealing to their, maybe, good sense and respect of the community, to try to get some results that way. So as a first step, I think what we're gonna do is what solicits some designs, is get some signage. So will we open that up too? Do people have suggestions?
We can. People could email suggestions to the Selectmen's Office, and we should be prepared, I would think, to vote maybe by our next meeting on implementing some signage.
So the signage would be similar to like the campaign signs you see? This isn't gonna be permanent signage? I would hope that we could open this up so that if people wanted to put the signs in their yard, they could, because we certainly need this all over town. It would probably be a series of signs, because it's a lot to get on one sign, like, you know, please slow down, respect our community, you know, maybe a series of one, two, or three signs. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna solicit input too. Let's try to keep it rated G, because I know some people are really frustrated, but, and get some suggestions, and then we'll talk about it at our next meeting. Rob has money in the highway budget to do this. I'm not sure if it would take a vote for the board to...
I think these signs would endorse the signs.
With the sign bylaw, I'm not sure if we would have to take any action. I think there's a sign, the size would be small enough?
Any sign in town is under the discretion of the Selectmen.
All right, so we would have to vote to implement this sign?
Yes, and then he'll take care of production and pick him up.
Okay, all right. So that's the plan. So if you have suggestions, where do you want them to be emailed?
To the Selectmen's Office, BOSassistant@plimptontown.org, or if you, I think all of, everybody here probably has our email contact.
It's on the website, too.
Yeah, it's on the website.
The point being, of course, we'd love to ban the use of J brakes, particularly off of Main Road, but we are told by the Department of Transportation that that's not enforceable. As we discussed at the last meeting, the somewhat smaller step, but maybe a useful step, is asking truckers to be respectful of the quiet in residential areas. We'll see what happens. So if we can enforce this, we can appeal to truckers' respect for the town that they want.
Anything, John?
No, we'll see what people come in and suggest. I think that's a good first step, and we'll get some signs up.
Yeah, we'll get some signs up, and hopefully, we get some traction with those, and then I don't think it would take too long to see if they're working.
So anyone that wants to contribute a suggestion to go to Bree, she'll get them to us, and then at the next meeting, we can discuss and make a decision.
Be ready to implement, okay.
I would suggest, if we knew who, you know, there's, so there's groups of truckers, there's some one-offs, but by and large, there are different companies that are using this. And if we had a list, we could then go back to the companies themselves and ask them to...
Some of our larger businesses in town, and contact them and let them know what we're trying to accomplish. We could do that, we could do that even now.
Really good idea.
And I think the people who are out in the town that are frustrated by this, to the extent that you see these trucks and you can grab a name off them...
Reach out to companies.
Yeah, that would be great.
See what we can do.
Another step.
All right, so...
I know what is concerned about Plimpton right now, but what about, I know Halifax has had the issue too, and what if the surrounding towns do too?
Well, that's kind of our next item on the agenda, is, you're right, it's not just a Plimpton problem, and it's not just a Brook Street problem, it's got, its tentacles are far outreaching. So what we were going to be looking to do was, last year, we had tried to partner, actually, with Kingston, to eliminate truck traffic on Ring Road and Main Street, and they weren't receptive. So we'd like to revisit that with Mark and Liz taking the lead, and see if we can get some traction this year, because it is, it's happening everywhere, and our feeder roads are being used because we're a cut-through. And I don't know if it's even necessarily faster to take the cut-through rather than stay on the numbered roads. So that's something that we're gonna try again, which will hopefully help with the engine brakes too, and hopefully we'll have better, they'll be more receptive to this idea this time around. We had done some homework with OCPC and had traffic counts done, and we really did our homework with this, but we just couldn't get beyond, we couldn't get any buy-in from any of the neighboring communities that we need to be part of this in order for it to happen, because we can't say, oh, you can't travel these roads in Plimpton, and then...
Increase traffic.
Yeah, increase traffic on other roads without them being supportive of this as well, because there's signage involved with doing this, and your neighboring communities have to agree to it as well. But it really makes sense for them too, to try to keep the trucks on the numbered roads. So that's what we're gonna try again. Hopefully, better luck this time, but we're not giving up. So we're gonna continue to try and see what we can do to reduce the noise and get the truck traffic off of the small roads and keep them on the numbered roads.
I don't know if this is related or tied in, but I know we're gonna do repairs to like, you know, West Street and Cross Street and everything, and I know that the trucks with the brake issue is rarely showing on Brook Road where we are, you know, in Little Tuxedo, which is really not necessarily an issue now, but of course, the bridge is gonna be repaired too. Can we anticipate that this issue is also, that trucks are gonna be using a reconstructed bridge with re-improved roads rather than going down 58, for example?
Over to Middleborough, it's possible that it would be a cut-through, and that might be something for us to look at now too, in this.
Is it related to how the bridge is constructed?
Well, the bridge is gonna be, the only change really is that it's going to be a taut bridge, but it's gonna be the same width, and it's gonna have the wood sidings.
What's the capacity?
I'm not sure what it is.
They have a public hearing coming up.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
Where is it?
It's online, it's virtual. We had posted the information.
You have to register for it.
Okay.
That might be something you want to participate in.
And then after tomorrow's meeting, our Highway Department should then have a full set of plans that they get from Mast D O T that will be available for the public.
Who has the final say? Is it Mast D O T?
Mast D O T, unfortunately, they're funding the work. But they did take the town's suggestions seriously as far as maintaining the rural character of the bridge, so at least that part is, it appears anyway, at this stage of design, that they're retaining the wood siding.
And they didn't widen it either, which was one of our concerns.
I don't, I don't think you'll find, if the bridge is improved, I don't think you'll find a lot of trucks go that way, just because the road is very twisty and stuff, and it's much smoother for them to come down 58 and then cut down.
It's amazing, just that turn at Little Tuxedo, with the Lincoln light, those brakes, they fly right around.
But we do get a lot of trucks, yeah, we have a lot of trucks, trucks that are too heavy for the bridge, because they ignore the signs that are posted that say what the weight limit is. So there's huge trucks coming by my house on Main Road and the bridge all the time. So I agree with Eric, I think it could get worse.
I stand corrected.
Yeah, yeah, well, you don't live there.
If I was driving a truck, I wouldn't go that way.
And with all the low trees as well.
Maybe that's something we can perhaps move Chief Hall into, maybe an officer station nearby. Trucks that are too heavy, if the town decides this is the weight limit, and these trucks are coming along, perhaps, you know, some citations will adjust that again.
Perfect.
I think we recognize it's a multi-pronged approach, and I mean, we've tried a bunch of stuff, speed zones and the flashing, the flashing speed signs, and some of the stuff works better than other stuff, and I think the way we find out is just keep plugging away at it.
Can you guys just turn on your microphones, my interest?
They are, but you know, it works.
These are just for the recording.
It's for the recording, so...
Oh, okay. We'll just have to plug them.
They are. I do think, you know, to the extent that you see the same trucks, I would be interested in knowing who they are, so that at least we could maybe tie a little campaign going back to them directly and saying, you know, this is a problem.
Well, in our area, on Mayflower Road, McKinnon is constantly violating both the J brakes, truck brakes, and speed limits.
Well, good, Mike, if you could just pass on the information...
Yep, absolutely. Absolutely. They've got, today is a perfect example, one's coming down Mayflower Road, he's got J brakes, or truck brakes if you call them, but really only to slow a truck down if you need to, real quickly. You shouldn't have, you don't need to have them on, but they like the sound, because it makes them sound big and bad. So they all flip the switch that turns on the J brakes, and then every time you take them off the accelerator, the brake is on from here. And it's, if they're doing the speed limit, they shouldn't need to use them. There's no need to.
So one of the things I'd be interested in, one of the reasons I'd like to approach the companies, is, is it a company policy? Because obviously, J brakes save on the brakes, which are very expensive. So if it's a company policy, then we could maybe direct some discussion there.
Yeah. Yeah. I think, I tried to make a joke at the last meeting, tongue-in-cheek, about truckers and frustrating men, and it was meant to be a joke. We don't want to make this more complicated than need be for truckers. I mean, the staying on the numbered highways may add two or three or four minutes to a trip through town. On the big level, I think the goal is to make it increasingly known that Plimpton is not necessarily a cut-through town, is absolutely not a town where it's a good idea to speed, and hopefully, along the way, we can appeal enough to people's respect for citizens that they won't do the J brakes, and maybe they'll slow down.
And Bree pointed out, the cranberry season is approaching for harvest too, which generates a lot of truck traffic as well. So really, time is of the essence to get moving on this. So really time is of the essence to get moving on this and so we'll be meeting in what, two weeks?
On the 11th.
On the 11th, okay. Maybe we could even put something on our Facebook page.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah. So if you've got suggestions on signage ideas or want to come in on the 11th when we talk about it?
Absolutely. But I'm a little confused where we are on the agenda.
Okay. So we kind of went from one to two.
Okay.
So...
So we haven't gotten to three yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, three. Well, we kind of went into three. So what, so why don't we wrap up two? So the engine brakes, we're doing the awareness campaign. We're soliciting suggestions from residents about possible slogans to have on the signage. We're going to partner with Highway and get these out around town. We're hoping at our next meeting on the 11th, we can decide on some language to start with. I mean, we can certainly grow it from there, but just to get the ball rolling. So that's what's happening with two. Now, three, what we're going to do is revisit something that we had done last year that we weren't able to get any traction on, but we had really done our homework. And that was to try to restrict truck traffic on a couple of our smaller roads. It wasn't a whole lot. I think it might have only been like three roads. I think it was maybe Upland, Main Street and Ring and Crescent. So it was just kind of that area, the cutting through. Right, but we couldn't even get that to work, so.
The one that stops and stops in Plimpton.
Right, there's just...
This section of Mayflower, it's not set up. Sight lines are horrible for trucks. I've been outside with my kids to get off the bus, I see trucks lock up brakes because his grandson's getting off the bus. It's a dangerous section of road. You have that amount of truck traffic.
Well, really, the town is residential and our smaller roads are not designed for this big truck traffic.
They should stay on Mayflower Road.
I agree. Stay on the numbered roads. So what I'll recommend is that we have Mark and Liz take the lead on this truck traffic route restrictions and try to compel our neighbors to have some serious discussions on this because we know it's not just a Plimpton problem. It's, they have this issue as well, but we need to work together in order to make it happen. We don't live in a bubble. We can't just restrict traffic in Plimpton and not give them an out.
However, the cause is within town, town Plimpton only doesn't mean it's...
We tried this a couple of years ago as far as putting an application into the Department of Transportation.
Mass DOT.
And that was pretty far along and it would have been fine had we been able to seek and obtain approval from the other towns. At the time, we were just looking at Kingston. It was a funny time and Kingston was an even, not funny, but an odd time in Carver and Halifax and so we didn't even approach them because they had enough on their plates. I think we're glad to try again and I think we'll do a lot more toward hopefully schmoozing those towns officials and stressing to them the degree to which this wouldn't affect them very much and in fact, in some intersections, may make it better, better that the trucks be on the main roads. Look, if that doesn't work, we're with the jake brakes, we're kind of appealing voluntarily to truckers to maybe respect the residential nature of the town. And if by chance we're not able to do this truck restriction, I think that again would be the approach to appeal to the truckers and dispatchers and the owners of the trucking company to just encourage them to stay on the main roads. I mean, they don't want to, the developers and the owners of the truck, truck companies I think would want us to be hospitable to them. They're the ones that come to us for permits and the like and so we have a particular way to do this and if this doesn't work, hopefully we can appeal to them on another level.
Why if the road section that you're talking about is solely in Plimpton, has nothing to do with other towns, do you have to get permission from other towns? Like I assume that you're talking about, when you talk about Main Street, you're talking about...
Does it involve keeping the traffic on the numbered routes which are governed by Mass DOT?
Again, a truck route at the end of the streets.
But it's an actual, so the heavy commercial vehicle exclusion, it does actually have consequences that come along with it if trucks continue to use those roads. So that is enforceable and therefore based on highway standards, we're required as a municipality to report it to MassDOT and seek their approval. And they would not sign off on it unless we've got...
Yeah, but you don't have to get approval from Kingston or Halifax or the section we're talking about.
They said that if you were diverting traffic to numbered routes in adjacent towns and part of it it was.
It's not going to...
Called 106 in Halifax and...
So that was the Main Street, but you're talking about Mayflower Road specifically, right?
If you're talking about Main Street, I assume you're talking from this intersection out to 106, right?
We had looked at doing some of it piecemeal at the time we were shut down.
Let me finish my question, please. You're starting here and you're going out to 106 in Halifax.
Right.
Okay? Both numbered routes on either end. What difference does it make if you don't let them go up Main Street? How does that affect anybody else?
So the Department of Transportation says if you're going to exclude trucks from a road like Main Street and the exclusion results in those trucks then affecting another town like Halifax because they would be directed down 58 into Halifax to pick up 106, that the other town has to buy into it.
Okay.
They didn't.
Oh, I understand.
And you can see from their thing, why do we want more trucks coming down into our town? So we need to do some work on the towns.
Right.
And of course, all of it's a compromise. If we get all the trucks back on 58, some of us live on Route 58. It's not, it doesn't benefit absolutely everyone.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a quick question. I don't even know if it's affected, does the police department, do they have like a truck enforcement unit or anything like that?
Not truck enforcement, no, no.
Traffic enforcement. Usually it's the state police that...
Well, State Police did have one too.
Yeah, the state runs it down there.
And enforcement is an important part of this and that's in the works as well. So that's just another prong to this stool to try to get the truckers to slow down and be more respectful as they travel town. So it's something we're working on. We haven't, we're not going to give up. We're going to continue. If one door closes, find something open. So we just, we're plugging away at it.
There's a lot of...
It's not easy.
It's not easy. It's like one step forward, two steps back, but we're going to keep trying to move forward with this.
Have you ever considered doing, reducing the speed limit where like all the other towns are?
We looked into that too.
That has issues with Mass DOT as well.
Our fantasy was to make 30 mile an hour speed limit throughout town, which is absolutely across the boards, simple, straightforward. The trouble is DOT has very specific rules on residential density. At what level there's enough residential density that you can do that. So, you know, our challenge is the, DOT hasn't been that cooperative.
I work in Rockton and as soon as you enter the city, there's signs everywhere that says residential speed limit, it's 30 miles an hour throughout the whole city.
It's density.
Rockton's a lot more dense.
And we don't even come close.
No, I...
I mean, that was another study we did too. So, yeah, we tried. We were trying all these different things.
It strikes me, there's certain areas of that city, as you know, that are kind of not nearly as dense and the roads are wider and everything else and you're talking about some of these roads we're talking about and it strikes me that I can drive faster in theory going through Rockton than I can down, you know, Mayflower or Willetoxin or Elm Street.
Yeah, they just implemented something similar in Randolph too. I think it's there, it's 25. Townwide.
Kingston.
Yeah, Duxbury's 25.
Yeah, yeah, which would be nice, but...
We just need more people.
No. We need to find other ways to make it happen.
Speed tables.
I stand corrected.
Lots of speed tables.
Or the, one of those speed bumps?
Yeah.
Yeah, or strips. What are the ones that, takeout tires? All of my crust. All right. So we're working on it. Yeah, it's, but I think this one's, it could, it's going to take some, a while, but we've got good people that are very committed to making some, making some positive change. Taking the lead here. So, all right, so I'll make that in the form of a motion. Make a motion that we authorize Mark Russo and the town administrator to work with other communities to try to implement some truck traffic route restrictions on behalf of the town.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So thank you very much for taking the lead on that. All right, so that's, more to come. More to come. You're welcome. All right, so Bree, warrants paid. $7,650?
It was an R. fund and you've got my word. I wrote my note on the back.
Awesome. All right, very good.
Well, we're...
May I have that back?
Well, let's just join the town properties committee, which I'm pleased.
Oh, nice, nice. Got a lot of good history.
Yes.
So Liz, town administrators' updates.
So we are getting ready to start work on our emergency preparedness plan and that is being funded through a grant that I had secured through the Community Compact Program. As part of that, which I had also listed under correspondence, I was hoping that you would take a vote to award the plan proposal...
Thank you.
To Dr. Mike Gutierrez. He is an assistant professor at Mass Maritime Academy in their Department of Emergency Management and he and his team are going to hopefully be working with us on putting together this plan for the town, which will make us eligible for additional types of grant funding. And it also ties into another initiative that I was looking to apply for to earn us the designation as a storm-ready community. So more to come on that. That'll involve some collaboration with some other entities. But for now, if you were willing to take the vote for Professor Gutierrez from Mass Maritime Academy to assist us with the consulting portion of this project.
All right, I'll make a motion that we award Dr. Mark Gutierrez from Mass Maritime the, to implement him as our consultant to create our emergency preparedness plan? Is that sound right, Liz? Okay.
Give me a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
For other updates, we recently approved a couple of change orders for the work on the old townhouse roof. One of those was for, requested by our architect for interior plaster repairs within the second floor meeting room while they're out there on site working. And then we also have some work being done to adding access to electrical junction boxes and replacement of some rotted roof sheathing boards. So that's...
So just to comment on that, if you haven't been in the old townhouse, you should take a look. It looks great. They have done the plastering, it's all painted, they've done the ceiling. It's really in great shape.
Should have a little open house when it's done.
We could.
Wouldn't be nice.
We're going to serve.
John's going to do a wine tasting.
Yeah, why not?
We've got, we've no alcohol in town property.
Well, even just coffee and tea and...
Yeah.
Yeah, well, nips.
We might want to revisit that, but that's for another day.
Yes, that'll be another agenda item.
Another agenda item, yeah.
Lisa is working on trying to get our free cash certified, hopefully in time for our special town meeting in October. So she's working on that. And otherwise, I've been communicating with the folks from the Recreation Committee about an opportunity for some different funding sources for some projects that they're looking to complete. And then otherwise, we have a couple things in correspondence. We have a request for the Plimpton Flower Show and this would be on September 3rd. It's a one-day event and it's from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So they're looking for approval on that. And I believe...
I thought it was from 11:00 to 3:00.
It says 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, but I'm assuming that that's, the 8:00 AM is probably...
Set up.
The actual show, I believe, is 11:00 to 2:00.
Okay, this has 8:00 AM, I'm assuming, for setup. And I think that John was interested in having the hearse on display at that as well.
Yeah, make arrangements to bring that up.
Nice.
Are they going to decorate it with flowers?
You're not going to be in it, are you?
Oh, gosh.
Depends, you know, where things are going.
You're right. Oh, my goodness. All right, so you need a motion from us to authorize the use of the town green. And who is doing this?
Stephanie Taren.
Okay, so is it any town group?
It's, she runs like the floral stuff at her, at her farm.
She's doing it with the support of the Garden Club.
Okay, all right. So I'll make a motion that we authorize Stephanie...
Taren.
Taren, working with the Plimpton Garden Club, to use the town green on September 3rd from 8:00 to 2:00 and that she gets the necessary sign-offs and, from the different departments. All right, so we got a motion?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And then we did receive a piece of correspondence late in the day today relative to names being provided to the public should they make a public records request. So I think we would just want to remind everybody that any correspondence with a public entity such as the town via email or letters, anything like that does constitute a public record and is governed under the public records law. So names would be provided and unfortunately, that's out of our hands. It's not a decision for us to make, it's the public records law, which is a state law.
Thank you, Liz. All right, anything else?
I don't have anything else.
All right. I don't think we got the minutes from the 14th, did we?
We didn't.
Okay, so we'll hold...
I wasn't here.
The minutes from the 14th.
Yes, please.
All right. And it looks like our next meeting will be on September 11th and at that point, we'll hopefully have some good ideas for our engine brake awareness campaign. So that'll be a topic for discussion then. How about down some raves?
September 11th.
So I have two. I did a WATD interview early this morning and as is often the case, I was asked about selectmen raves in the comment of the person doing the interview was this is very unique and different from other South Shore towns and a pleasure that we have something as unique as raves, even more a pleasure that it used to be rants and raves. And we, I think we dropped the rants because none of us were taking advantage of the opportunity.
I thought it was because of me.
We can't rant.
We can't rant.
Without it being specifically on the agenda.
Wave a wad.
And I think actually, ransom raves was originally...
John's idea.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, it came out of a TV vote program.
A what?
Beat the Press was on WGBH.
Oh.
That's where it came from. Emily Rooney.
So my rave is for selectmen raves. My other rave is something that Chief Davis said at the award celebration, that no town seems to work better in the last few years of coordination between police and fire, the close teamwork. And I think we've all witnessed when that isn't the case and the absolute clash and grabs for territory that can go on between blue and red. And it's just, it's exquisite that we're going through this time of détente and actually teamwork and may it well continue.
What do you have, John?
I have a few things. I was reminded how, we have a number of new families that have moved in town and the involvement that we're seeing, we've seen it with the Recreation Committee... I've seen it with the Recreation Committee, being fully staffed and all the things they're doing, all the baseball teams. I went to a lemonade stand the other day and for the sixth graders in it, the parking lot was full and it was just parents who were there with their children. I figured if the parents alone bought the lemonade, we were all set. So it's really good to see the involvement of new families getting involved. And the other thing, I'll give a little shout out for something, I work with the library. We had Michelle Pecoraro come and speak, who is the Plymouth 400 Executive Director. And she's a Plimpton resident. And it was, you know, she talked about what happens when you have an national program where you're flying people in for the celebration of the 400, 400th anniversary from all over the world and all of a sudden COVID hits. And how do you scramble? And so these, it's fun to hear these people come in and talk. So a rave for what's going on at the library.
Very nice. My rave would be for, along the same lines of, as yours, Mark, just that we've come a long way and with police and fire and it's leadership, you know, through good leadership and, and just building relationships and it's, and there's a real sense of team and a sense of pride. And it's, it's just a great time. It's really an exciting time to be on this board, a lot of good things happening and it's just, they're a pleasure to work with. It's, it's wonderful, so, thank you to all of them for their hard work every day. So the, they make us very proud.
Absolutely.
All right, so that's all we've got for tonight, so I'll make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night.